The following program is sponsored by The Greek, Ely's Radio Shack dealer at 570 Altman in downtown Ely, and brought to you as a public service by Georgetown Media in Ely, White Pine County Commission Meeting, June 24th, 2020.
Good morning. I'm sorry to be in a few minutes late. I have some business to take care of, but right now we're past nine and we are going to go ahead and open today's meeting. Pardon me? Okay. Welcome to the June 24th meeting of the White Pine County Commission. Would you all please join me in our pledge? Shane, why don't you lead us there?
Certainly. Would you please follow me in the pledge? I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Yeah, the first item we have is normal, is a moment of silence, so if you please take a moment to pray or meditate or whatever you'd like to do. Okay, we'll open the meeting with public comment. Commissioner Boles is out of town and won't be in attendance today. We do have a quorum. We have the four of us that are here, but that being said, we'll open the first item up, which is public comment. Is there any public comment on the phone today?
Yes, Mr. Chairman, this is Gary Puria.
Please, Gary, go ahead.
I want to think the commission for bringing RCI on, Jeremy Drew joined our meeting, the water meeting last week, and we appreciate their services. I think one thing that would be helpful is if the commission could send the chairman of both Pluac and the Water Committee, like exactly the protocol and how we go about asking for help from RCI, you know, how we, what the procedure is when we need their help.
Okay. I think we can accommodate that. Right, Mike?
Yeah.
Mike's here. Mike, we will agree, we can, we can do that. And what, do you have any suggestions that you'd like to bring forward right now while you're on public comment? Of what you'd like to have there?
I just want to make sure that everybody's on the same page. I know that when I asked Jeremy at the Water Committee, any kind of support or help has to come through the commission, and I just want to make sure that there's not, everybody's on the same page and there's not any time delay. Sometimes we need to have good help right away, and I hope that whatever we can do, that just everybody knows what the procedure is and that we can get it done quickly when we need the help.
If I can.
Go ahead.
Gary, this is Lori Carson. I'm the point person to Jeremy. We have regular telephone conversations, and if I can be of help in that way, you can talk, contact me at any time. So, that's it.
I guess that's the question. I think, can you, we asked, we need help from RCI. Do we go up to you first and then have, do you go up to RCI or?
Let me interrupt real quick, Gary. Jeremy's on our agenda at 9:30 with some timed items. We'll be discussing this. It's in public comment right now. You know, we can't really debate a lot of stuff in public comment. We'll listen to Jeremy, and during his presentation, Lori or Mike can, can address how he, he might like, which way he might like us to help him. How's that?
That sounds great. Thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else on the phone for public comment? Have you seen anybody, Mike? No, sorry. Okay, we'll come back to the people on the phone in a minute, but right now, I'll ask for anyone in the audience in attendance to please come forward for public comment.
Good morning, everyone. I'm Mark Bassett, president of the Northern Railway Foundation, and I have to confess to making an error. We normally, I know, it's shocking, we normally have an agenda item to close the road in between the train tracks and the golf course for the Fourth of July fireworks show that we do, and I neglected with everything else that's going on, put in that request, and I was wondering if there's anything we can do at this late date.
Yeah, we'll just, we'll just close it as per, we do every year, and then we'll ratify the next agenda.
Terrific. Thank you all very much. Appreciate it.
Thank you, Mark.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the attendance? Please come forward.
Good morning. Lori, my house center, I just wanted to bring you guys up today upon the coronavirus pandemic. Construction has started. Originally, we were wanting the high school, but when the coronavirus came in, actually pictures for the high school for our program. So, due to concerns of staff and air mingling and possibly cross-contamination because now the high school students in their kitchen as well, we are working from the Elks Hall and we have gotten our health permit transfer over there with inspection from the Health Department for temporary to reconstruction completed. So, all functions are taking place at the Elks Hall right now, and as far as the drive-through is looking much better, actually. We're not causing traffic jams.
Okay. What was the process you used to go ahead and use the Elks Hall? Can I do this, Mike?
Uh, not really.
Okay, not really. But you, can I ask this question? You're saying that it's due to the coronavirus that we've had to move from the high school to the Elks Hall? And Elizabeth, maybe you could look into this because of some of the CARES Act? Would that maybe, the rent that we're paying for the Elks Hall qualify for that? So, I'm just, we'll deal with that later, but that's, I can't ask any more than that, so it's public comment. Sorry. Okay.
And that's later today's agenda, is that correct? The CARES Act? Anyone? We can hear for that.
Okay. Thank you.
You're welcome.
And good luck on serving, Mrs. Seagus.
Thank you.
Anybody else in the audience who would like to speak in public comment? George, please come forward.
Mr. Chairman, the new parking lot designed for the convention center does not meet minimum media requirements. The center walkway has not been back end to keep pedestrians off the street, especially those on wheelchairs. The center walkway is to be replaced. Who designed that fiasco? Who approved it? Who's inspecting?
I believe those are city streets, George, and I think you should know this.
That belongs to the county, sir. That's the only reason I'm bringing it here. It's your board, they're screwing up, and you need to be aware of that.
I mean, the board, the, the building, the, the street, the access, it's in the city limits.
No, no, I'm not about the streets. I'm talking about the parking lot, which is county property.
Okay. I'm sorry.
Reset the clock, please.
Yes.
Um, let's see. At least four street lights within a block in the center have been out for six months to a year. The present tour board is not leaving a good impression on our downtown area. City Councilman Chris Carson and Commissioner Boles need to stop, step up to the plate. I reported the concerns to the city clerk over a year ago. Those people don't have any skin in the game. I do. My business owners do. We don't want to work in the dark. If the present board doesn't have the time or interest, they need to be removed, Mr. Chairman. Lastly, the newly installed valley gutter should have been done across the full length of Sixth Street. The project looks half-baked, another 15 feet. Project should be done right the first time. Where we at in this county, this city? We need to address that. Get the, some people who really care about it. Mr. Chairman, how many discrepancies or deficiencies do I have to bring before you, before you do something about the building inspector? Who's selectively enforcing law under color law? I told you numerous times that the biggest single detriment to growth in the city and the county is the building inspector. Depending on who you are, nothing gets done, or there is no problem. The discrimination needs to stop. That's on your shoulders and this board. How many times I got to come before you? Mr. Chairman, I've asked, in the past, I'm asking again if your fire chief has had a chance to inspect the ingress egress on Avenue D accessing the highway, 93 near the new Holiday Inn. The road is much too narrow to allow an emergency vehicle to access, let alone the large firetruck or ladder truck. The Holiday Inn is a three-story structure. The city has failed with me to address the issue. There is no proper access along the Van Camp jump here. The curb should have been put back, excuse me, another six feet to allow for a wider road. We keep getting that rock and that sidewalk run over, including the stop sign, Mr. Chairman. Come here and sit in here to hire engineers and inspectors that know what they're doing, and if I have codes that have been adopted. Did the inspector ever make it back from Mariko with his wife and the city county vehicle? Have to go in there for lunch? Is that part of our problem? Did I mention Carol McKenzie hasn't corrected her ADA?
About a thousand times, thank you.
It hasn't been done. I just, I don't need to use two tracks.
That, I signaled this came for your three minutes. I think we gave you your, your extension also. Thank you. Thanks, George.
I need some answers, Chairman.
Does anyone have a public comment? There's one in the building that I can say, please, Nicole?
Yeah, Chairman, I have a couple of letters that were emailed to me. The first one reads, Chairman Howe and Commissioners, oh, you have copies of these in front of you as well, and there's copies at the door for public. Anticipating my inability to attend tomorrow, I submit these comments on the agenda item dealing with the rental lease of hangar two at the airport. My comments from the April 8th, 2020 commission meeting on the same topic are attached for inclusion in the record, but not intended to be read. I make the same recommendations as in April. One, that hangar two be leased as a whole, as was historically done until Marie Hugo's passing several years ago. Since then, various methods have been attempted to make the hangar available, but the result has been less revenue to the county and total denial of use to local residents and transient pilots in many months. Two, that the new competitive lease be sought by competitive bidding with no minimum bid amount, or if a minimum is set, that it be at the amount of the last long-term lease to Mr. Hugo of $230 per month. Recall that the more recent attempt to lease at more than 20% higher resulted in no bids at all. Three, that oral and written bids be allowed. Thank you for your consideration, Mike Coster. Second letter. Dear White Pine County Commissioners, as I mentioned last week, I plan to regularly discuss racial justice and racial equality issues. My topic this week is the removal of Civil War statues and monuments and the renaming of public buildings and landmarks honoring Confederate generals and politicians. These actions are often painted as an attempt to rewrite or erase history. In fact, the removal of these objects and names is correcting a historical narrative that is offensive, oppressive, and factually incorrect. This applies to us locally. In 2019, Jeff Davis Peak in Great Basin National Park was renamed Dosso Dojabi to honor the Shoshone peoples' name for the peak. This wasn't the first time Jeff Davis Peak had been renamed. Today Wheeler's Peak was named for Jeff Davis, for the Secretary of War by Lieutenant Colonel Steptoe in 1855. In 1869, following the Civil War and Jeff Davis's defecation to the Confederacy, the peak was renamed Wheeler Peak, and Jeff Davis was moved to a subordinate peak below the highest peak in the Snake Range. History is nuanced and rarely simple. After Reconstruction, former slaves had regained many of the rights and privileges afforded to them as citizens. Black senators, congressmen, and state leaders worked towards racial equality and justice. Working with black people as equals was an affront to racist white Southerners. White leaders sought to strip black people of their rights to vote, assemble peacefully, own property, and hold office. As part of this calculated and intentional effort, the lost cause narrative of the Civil War was developed. The lost cause narrative stated that the Southern cause was just and right, but the Civil War was about states' rights and northern aggression. The wrongs of slavery were stripped away as a casual factor in the Civil War. This is how history was perverted and rewritten. As Jim Crow segregation began to take effect, and thousands of American citizens were murdered and terrorized without legal consequences, a concerted effort was made to erect monuments to slave owners and Confederate personalities such as Robert E. Lee, Jefferson Davis, and Nathaniel Bedford Forrest. Without this context, Confederate monuments may be seen as simply a historical curiosity. However, given the oppression and terrorism that black people faced between Reconstruction and the Civil Rights Era and the rise of the lost cause narrative, these monuments are symbols of white supremacy and black subjugation. Ask yourselves, how would I feel going to a school of driving past a monument on public property honoring the people that fought a war for the right to own and its slave you? When viewed in this context, the vandalism and destruction of these monuments makes more sense. History is a reflection of today. This has always been true. Thank you for your time and attention. Dr. Brian Hamilton, Baker, Nevada.
Anything else?
That's it.
Is there anyone on the phone for public comment? Hearing none, no one else in the audience? I, I have a couple items. I was late for the meeting because I was in a discussion with, with the DA. I had a call from Senator Gobachia this morning. The state legislature is looking like it's going to go back into session on July the 7th. Our next meeting is July the 8th. One of the items that, I think it's Senator Majority Leader Seggeston, I think that's his name, something like that, Seggeston, is to put on, the county clerk, Nicole can hear to this, are all happy with the way the mail-in vote went, and I agree, I got no problem with that. But we, as the White Pine County Commission, and I can't poll anyone because that's what my deal was, need to look at, my opinion on this, and I, I think I speak for some others, is that I have no problem with the mail-in at all. I mailed it in correctly, but I also agree with citizens' rights to vote how they wish, which is to vote early, vote by mail, or to go in person on the polling day. They're going to try to push this legislation through, at least that, that's the opinion, that it would be a mandated mail-in vote for the November election on this special session. It's something that we, as a commission, the four of us, I would like us all to take a look at it and to come back at the June 8th meeting. I know we can't get a day before the legislature starts, but for us to form our opinion, to see how you feel, and act as a commission, as a whole commission, to support what I just spoke to, to, to ask the legislature to allow the citizens to vote as they choose. And if, you know, if for some reason Corona's involved, we have to go to mail-in, that's what we have to do. But if the legislature acts and they make it a mandated mail-in election in November, that's the rule, that's the way it works. So, anyway, a letter from each of the commissions across the state voicing their opinion on how they would like to proceed is, in White Pine County, is, is part of that, and I would ask each of you to, to kind of, can't get back to me now because I was serial communication, but it goes, work through Mike or someone else, and, and we'll draft the letter and get it sent and ratified on the, if you could put that on the Agenda 48. Is that okay, Mike? Am I doing this all right?
I gotta, I gotta talk to Brian about it. I, I do have some concerns. I think the public needs to have some input on that letter, and we might just, the best case scenario is, is send a letter that they have to take on the session, which is, I think, going to be all right the way they move. I don't think they're going to propose or pass anything on the Thursday they're back in session, so.
Okay.
If they get the, the day after they're in, I think it'd be appropriate for the public to weigh in on the voting issues.
So, we can make that an agenda item in 48, and then on the, right after the meeting that day, we can, whatever the commission decides and the public decides. Yes.
We would need to know what committee is handling that, so that we can address the...
We want to find out what their bill is, or, I mean, I haven't been there about it.
Pete suggested, Pete suggested that the letter be sent to Secretary of State Sagaski. Yeah, that's who he suggested that we send the letter to, and she, she can navigate through the legal system that way, and that's the proper person. The other item, and it kind of goes along with the letter by Dr. Hamilton, I've been listening to, I'm a veteran. I was drafted in 1968. My brother was killed in Vietnam. My father served in World War II. I'm a strong conservative. I believe in our police. I believe in our fire. I believe in our EMS. I believe in standing and for the national anthems, for looting the flag, having my hand over my heart. And some of this stuff and the police reform that they're talking about could have hit the state of Nevada very seriously. We, I support the police and I, and I support standing. I strongly oppose anyone who kneels for the national, kneels during the national anthem or in allegiance to the flag. It's my opinion, I strongly feel that way. I'm offended by anyone who does that. This thing on the, Dr. Hamilton said, that's his opinion. I believe in our history, and I believe in government, and I believe in law and order. And then without that, without having that, this country would be in deep trouble. So, those are my public comments. If anybody else has anything, that's fine, but I, I think those two items, I strongly feel about the way I feel about the flag. That's just the way it is. I'm sorry. If I offend anybody, I'm not sorry. I feel that way. So, I'm tired of some of the comments that I see, and I'm tired of police reformers or, or doing away in some of these large cities with, with funding the police departments. BS. Okay. So, if anybody else got anything to say, please speak up.
I do.
Okay.
I agree with you.
Okay.
Tell that building inspector to give me my building permit. I've been waiting for months, and I'm willing to pay for it.
I see.
Yeah. All lives matter. Tell him to get his knees off my neck.
Sorry. We're going to go on. If there's nobody on the phone and nobody else in the building, we're going to start the commission meeting. We have our first item at 9:30, so we're going to go ahead and go to page three and items from elected officials. Item 2A, County Commission, I'm up again, Richard Howe. Item A is discussion for possible action, the approval of a letter to the Governor's Assistant, thanking him for the support, state support in White Pine County. The three items I brought forth, and, and, you know, we don't have to agree politically, but the state of Nevada re-awarded the contract for the state, for the city of Ely, the state. It was the only one they awarded in the state of Nevada. It's going to be huge. It'll start July the 6th and bring many, many dollars in and improve. We're the only county in the state of Nevada that received that funding for the state highways. A lot of people worked on the outside, but I, I feel strongly. The $5 million that the governor signed to help White Pine County with the Justice Center, that is going a long ways to help us get this Justice Center built and in place. And the last item was, as soon as he received the COVID, I was on my way to Reno, he called me to explain to us that White Pine County received over a million dollars, right out of a million dollars for the COVID, and I feel that it's only right, and I'm asking the commission to authorize a letter be sent to the governor thanking him for those support to White Pine County for those three items. Is there any other one who wants to make comment on that, or anyone disagree with it?
Yes, Mr. Chairman. Yeah, I, I mean, I know where you're going with this and support it, just, me personally, I won't criticize the governor, but I don't know if I can per se thank him. It feels to me like, you know, someone hit you over the head with a shovel and brought you the ice. You know, I didn't, I just, you know, there's a lot of folks in this community that were hurt by, by his actions, and it's, I'm not coming at this politically. If he was a Republican governor, I'd be the same stance, but I don't know if we want to individually send a letter or something, I'm, I'm fine with that, but I don't know. I can't really kiss the golden ring, I guess, is what I'm saying. This is my opinion. I understand where, where you're coming from, and under regular circumstances, I'd have no problem, but after all this mess, I, I don't think I can do it.
Send the money back.
Anyone else got a comment?
Yeah, I have to say, I agree with, with Commissioner Goode. I, along this is coming down the pipe without, without the help of the governor, it's his signature, but I, I just don't feel that he's the responsible party in this, and, and I have to go along with the same thing. I, I think there's been a lot, a lot of issues created that, that didn't have to be created for us, and, and I have a really hard time. I do believe that individually, and so am pleased we have the right to send that letter, but I, I can't in good conscience put my name on a, a letter stating that. That's fine.
Lori, you have anything?
I really have mixed feelings. I do know that it was also through NACO that worked with the governor's office, and also it was the governor that appointed JJ, Commissioner Gobachia, to the LEAP Board along with Mayor Kirkpatrick. Mayor Kirkpatrick has been a friend to White Pine County, and I appreciate, she really went to bat for us, and she worked closely with the governor in regards to seeing to it, both her and JJ being on the LEAP team. I would probably sign it. I would probably sign it, just because I, if it wasn't for them, and it was through the governor's office, that they were there to help White Pine County. So, my perspective is a little bit different, so far as the appreciation.
Okay.
But it's through the governor's office, which essentially, I guess, would be the government.
Okay, it's kind, but my opinion is, we, somebody did us a favor, let's return. But here, here, what about this? I, yes, we did it. What if we sent the letter to the state of Nevada thanking them for their, or however you want to put it? It's, my opinion was, we got these funds and we got, someone went to bat for us. Whenever somebody does something for you, you should say thanks. That's, that's my opinion. You should thank him, whether you like him or whether you don't. Everybody on this board is a Republican. We all, we all have strong feelings towards a lot of the issues that are going on. However, somebody went to bat. White Pine County is being given a whole lot of money that could have gone other places. The state, I think, if I ever saw the number, $436 million, they had a cut from the state road department. White Pine County got their money back. So, that's my opinion, but I, I really appreciate everybody's comments, and I understand where they're coming from. This is simply, it's simply saying thank.
I mean, I can, I can support a legislature or NACO or one of these, these boards with a bunch of people, you know, like, we're, you know, so thankful to Pete Gochia and John Ellison, you know, for us and everything, so I'm, I'm fine if we do something general like that, but that, specifically to the governor, I cannot support that, but if we want to rebrand this to a wider body, I'm, I'm fine with that.
Can we do that as on the agenda item, Mike?
Not on this agenda.
Okay.
But we can definitely, let's figure out what you want to do, and we'll have it drafted correctly for the next agenda. Do you want it to NACO? Specifically, I think NACO has been one of the most, one of the largest advocates for White Pine County, and other roles, too.
And Richard, you know, I mean, they had term meetings, they've had meetings with our, with the finance directors across the state, with commissioners across the state, and I think that they've been extremely instrumental in, in passing things on from the governor's office and, and making it clear what those directives are and any, any way that we need to help, who we should contact. I mean, I, I really, I'm very appreciative of that.
Also, if you want to specifically address the End Up Project, maybe you should send it to the End Up Board.
Well, I have, I have an agenda item on that. It's not, there'd be a little bit more discussion whenever we move to that tonight.
Let's do this. Let's, looks to me like we have a two-to-two vote, and rather than vote on it, maybe we can just leave it as a discussion item.
Just get a motion to table.
And a motion to table is fine.
Okay.
And I, should I ask for a motion to approve first?
You don't have to.
Okay, I'll look for a motion to table, item one.
Food table.
Second.
Motion by Travis, second by Lori. Any further discussion? All of those in favor? I.
I.
Both, passionate. How long is your item going to take, do you think, Travis?
Uh, I think it'll pretty quick. I, I mean, this is, I can just tell you the backstory, see what you guys want to do. I don't know.
Well, let's go to the 9:30 chairman's, because we'll just do that one under County Commission. We'll go back to the agenda as it's, as it's written, and Jer, is Jeremy on the phone?
See him. There he is. Okay.
We're going to open the item, and then we'll get to you, okay? We're going to go back to page two. Item one is notice on untimed items. It's 9:30. It's natural resources. Item one is discussion for possible action, the approval regarding a work order amendment for scoping comments to the Robinson Mine Expansion environmental impact statement. Jeremy, go ahead.
I'm the manager of the Gobachia Group, project manager with Resource Concepts. Good morning, Commissioners. Thanks for allowing me to join your meeting today via Zoom. Thanks to Ms. Baldwin and Ms. Luon for helping me through all the agenda items and putting together quite a bit of support material this week. Item one is pretty straightforward. I was able to listen in on your last commission meeting where you directed developing a, a letter of support and a scoping letter for Robinson Mine and their proposed expansion. So, essentially, what I have before you is a simple passport amendment. I was able to participate in their project scoping meeting last week. The draft letter is actually your next item on the agenda, and I believe our comments are due June 29th, so we'll be, assuming all of those are well connected, agenda item will be initiated to make that deadline. Happy to answer any questions on item one.
Anyone? Hearing none, I'll ask for a motion to approve the work order. Here are none. I'll ask for a motion to approve the work order for the Robinson Mine Expansion.
Move to approve.
Motion by Travis.
Second.
Second by Shane. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? None?